Okay, good evening. It's 6:30. We have our work session tonight now. And we will turn the -- just for everyone here that's in attendance, just for your information, this isn't a public hearing, so there won't be any public input during this meeting. But we'll just be discussing the building analysis at 135 South Main. And feel free to jot down any questions you have, so that we can discuss them. So I will turn the time over to our city engineer, Lloyd Chinney.
Thanks, Mayor. It's good to be here tonight and bring you our report on the evaluation of 135 South Main. I hope that each one of you has taken a few minutes to read through the staff report and also through the report from Design West. I don't think that it comes as any surprise that we have a few issues we need to address. And those were very well summarized in the report. And when you start to open up an old building, sometimes you will find things that you don't anticipate. And sometimes you find things that you do anticipate. And as we looked at the structure on that, we had to do a little more investigation. I don't know if you were aware or not, but we had to go next door into the hair salon and take a peek into their ceiling to better understand how these buildings were connected and hopefully not joined at the hip, you know, so that what we did in our building didn't affect them. So it's been an interesting process. But what we've learned is that we definitely have some improvements that need to be made. And in order to make a shift from a retail space to a restaurant space is going to take a significant amount of improvements. And I tried to list those out in short form in the staff report. Specifically, though, you know, the electrical is undersized. The heating and air conditioning is going to need a major change to accommodate a restaurant. And then plumbing and other utility systems also need an upgrade as we consider changing that space to that use. So the goal tonight is to get some direction from the council. And we have three bullet points in the staff report, so we don't miss those. I'd like some direction from you on amending or pursuing an amendment to Design West's contract to move into a design phase. And also your thoughts about beginning the process to hire a construction manager as we begin the design, so that we have a contractor onboard as we put this project together. And then lastly, I'd like your thoughts on whatever process you would like us to initiate to search for a tenant in this space. And be happy to address any questions you have. We have Mike Perez and our Design West team. They're here to also help answer questions. And so we'll turn it back to you.
I have a question. I remember looking at the building and the tenant that was there, the shoe store, I remember him saying that behind, right behind the building, that if too many leaves got in there, and then it would plug up, then it would back up the drain and it would flood. And I know that a few of the neighbors had similar issues. So I'm guessing that that was -- was that looked at? Was that part of this review?
We didn't really look outside the building too much. Those are issues that we'll have to address, depending on, you know, what the ultimate fate of the building was. That's why I think we didn't focus on that much. Our options for drainage back there are fairly limited. But we do have storm drain out on Main Street that, you know, we could extend that and get it closed.
Okay. Okay, let's see. Any other questions about the study? One thing that came to my mind was it seemed like it was a no-brainer that we would want to go with the option to renovate the existing space since it was double the cost to raise the building and rebuild. But council, do you agree? What are your thoughts on that?
I agree. And it is no surprise that we need to upgrade the electrical and HVAC and plumbing to all the seismic, all the standards of today that weren't there 100 years ago. Just to clarify, you said hire a contractor. Are you talking about like a CMGC?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And maybe if I could make a comment on the estimate. So in your packet, I highlighted the $1.3 million number and then put a big asterisk by that, that we had identified a little gap in the scope of the estimate. And that was being revised at the time the packet went out to you. So we have a final version of the estimate that includes additional costs for some of the structural upgrades that need to be done. Maybe the best way I can explain it is to relate it to this project here at City Hall. We had to do a structural upgrade here that involved adhering some carbon fiber material onto the masonry in all of the corners of this building and then using adhesive that would attach that to the building. That's kind of the same thing that needs to be done on the inside of the 135 South Main property, just to stabilize that masonry and to make it structurally adequate. So the revised cost in the estimate is $1.5 million. And so that adds another $205,000 to the amount that's listed in the Phase 1 budget in the report that you have.
Mayor, I have a few questions. Well, to answer your question earlier, I think of the two options that are presented here, I would agree with you. The remodel is preferable, primarily due to cost. I also really appreciate some of the kind of out-of-the-box thinking that was done in with the roof, bringing the stairs to the center of the building. I mean, there are some things that I think are really good about the initial plan. But I do have a couple of questions about wondering if we feel like it would be appropriate to try and identify a potential tenant before proceeding with the design phase and getting the construction managers, because it may inform what that space would look like and inform the design. And so I, that's just, you know, it seems like that might be a preferable order, bump that to the number-one bullet point. And Lloyd, I did have a question. Do you have like an engineer's estimate for the cost of the design phase? And how much a construction manager, I mean, just rough estimate here on what those costs would be?
I think those are going to add another couple hundred thousand dollars to the project. The other thing we need to consider is we still have some remediation work to do in there. There's a little bit of asbestos that needs to be abated, and so that'll add another cost.
And in terms of Councilwoman Price Hewish's recommendation of picking a tenant, you know, I had similar question. And when I talked to Gary, it seemed like maybe this could be like two tracks that are going forward at the same time, where we're working on the start of construction and also working on figuring out who the tenant is, so that that tenant is identified well before construction is actually undergoing. But what are your thoughts on that, Lloyd?
Yeah, I believe that you're, I think you're right, that those can be on a parallel track. I don't think that all the trains need to start at the same time, though. I don't know that it's imperative that we begin that search for a tenant right now. There's certainly some things that we need to, some balls we need to get rolling first, specifically with abatement in the space. And there are some design issues that need to be resolved that are, will be independent of whoever's in the space. You know, the structural issues or some of the bigger electrical or even the HVAC issues can start to be fleshed out now. So what I'm saying is that give us six or eight weeks, you know, to get some of these things moving, and then we can start searching for a tenant. I don't know how long that process is going to take. I don't know how big that pool is going to be. But, you know, we need some time to map out what that process looks like and how we're going to go about it.
So Lloyd, you're saying just to kind of get the timeline and the process settled will take about six to eight weeks, then, just what, abatement, remediation, then design, and just getting that kind of lined up? Or are you suggesting that we do the remediation and the abatement first and then move toward getting a tenant?
Yeah, in my mind, the first place to start is to solidify our relationship with our architect. The next is to move to the abatement. We never know what we may find. We may find something during that abatement process that, you know, may change our approach. I doubt it, but anything's possible in an old building. I do know that. Yeah, there's, I think six or eight weeks is a reasonable timeframe. I have a couple of other things going on, too, that are going to fit this in.
And one other comment is that we need to design a building that is not so tenant-specific that it can accommodate other future restaurateurs, too. So although having a tenant onboard as we're working through the design and construction will definitely be helpful, we want to avoid a very, very specific space, too.
Councilwoman Bradshaw.
Just to answer your first question, Mayor, I agree that it seems like the remodel is the best path forward. I had some questions for Lloyd. I was a little surprised, and I know that these are, this is not the actual design. This is just a concept that was included in the packet. But I was a little surprised that we are kind of limited in not having as robust a connection on the east side of the building, back into the town square park, as I had hoped for. I recognize it is, you know, maybe a little bit odd to have a restaurant that has two front doors on opposite sides of the building. But that was one of the features I thought was really unique about this. Given that this is just an idea of how the space could be organized, do you think that we can have a design that ends up, you know, having great connectivity to both Main Street and to the town square? Or do you think we're really going to be limited on picking one side of the building to really be the main focus?
I'm probably going to ask for an assist from our architect on this one. I think it all depends on where you want your kitchen. If you want your kitchen in the basement, then, you know, you can have a lot of room and you can do a lot of things on the main floor.
Can I piggyback a question on that? I had some more thoughts. This is Councilwoman Bradshaw. Particularly the roof. And I recognize there's a lot of live loads and structural requirements to make it happen. But on the roof, there was reference to the deck and dining that would be on the west side, the east side, not the west. And I picture this building helping create more live life on Main Street. And I'd love to see something on the Main Street side that shows that it's open, such as like an arbor, a trellis up on top with lights. And you hear the music, you hear people laughing, having fun, and it attracts you to go eat there. And if that could be on the Main Street side, I picture that helping it be much more successful than if it's on the east or the backside.
You want to address both of those?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Don't you start out with anything, any formal procedures?
Maybe just your name.
Okay. My name is Lieutenant, or Mike Perez. I'm from Design West Architects. I was the lead architect on this study, along with my entire team here. And to both of your points, though, one of our biggest decision-makers in the Phase 1 approach to this, which was the remodeled portion of it, was to try to save money in enhancing the amount of structure needed to be beefed up on that roof. And so what we did was we brought the column that was from the basement straight up on the east side, so that we didn't have to reinforce, we didn't have to take all the structure off from the east and west side in order to replace it all to be able to put rooftop dining. So we, on purpose, chose the east side because we were hoping to create interest from an elevated view, because right directly out of the east side exiting area, we have a little bit of a storefront space, a little bit of an entry area. But it immediately opens up in some asphalt and essentially a delivery space back there. So what we wanted to do is get up a little bit higher, where we can actually get a little bit more contact with the green space across the parking lot and get above the cars that are being moving across there. And then have that open trellis with some lights and some lively music, some people sitting up there and actually conversing. We did approach on the west side of putting actual dining there as well. And what we found was that it just increases the amount of structure you need, so your cost will go up a little bit, actually fairly significantly, because we'll have to replace all of the structure on that west side. So it's definitely doable, just a little bit more costly. And we love the idea. There's, right now, looking at the code, we didn't have too many issues. What we'd have to do is divide up two spaces, east and west, in order to accommodate rooftop equipment from the kitchen, the kitchen-required equipment, rooftop units, and any type of mechanical space that we need up there. So it would be kind of east and west dining space up there. Definitely doable. But that was our approach, was to create some liveliness on the remodel side from the west, or sorry, on the east side that can be visually seen from anyone coming in from the east or from the parking area. I don't know if that answered the question or not?
Yeah, that's good. And in terms of having an entrance from the west, I mean, from the east, is that, if there was an entrance from the east and an entrance from the west, was that something that was, could be incorporated, or was that not really part of the vision?
We definitely could have an entry right over there that we have on the east and west side. It's just not as glamorous as of an entry point. It does read as an entry. We hope to have an entry to the rooftop as well. So there's some stairs back there that you'll see in those examples. So you can either go upstairs or go straight in. And it will all depend on the tenant and how they want to utilize the space and how they approve people going in and out of the space. But definitely having some sort of entry sequence there would be really nice. I think we had approached a couple of different options. And one of our challenges right there is, on the east side, we chose that side specifically just to put the kitchen, which creates a little bit of a dead space on the exterior, because that's where we need delivery, that's where we're having an idea of where some of our exhaust might go. So it's kind of half-entry, and then the rest of it was more utilized for the functionality and the utilization of the back-of-house requirements for restaurants.
I know that some of these specifics are, you know, we have months to get into some of these specifics. But when I think about, like, for example, I love the idea of like a little walk-up window in the back, so that if people are over at the town square in like their swimming suits, maybe they don't want to go and sit down, but they just want to be able to have easy access to be able to walk up. Or I love the idea, too, of maybe like some outdoor dining in the front, like by Main Street, a few umbrellas out there, or just so it brings a little more visual interest of showing. But so I'm sure there's plenty of like options that we'll want to bounce around, and especially once we know who the tenant is and everything. But any other questions that any of you have?
I think some of the questions, I think Councilwoman Bell and I were asking, though, are things Lloyd would have to know and get direction on upfront, because they'd be structural. If I'm understanding from the architect and from Lloyd correctly, if a more robust connection on the east side is important to us, then that may, maybe we need one and a half versus option one and option two.
I might just add from the report, so it's page 12 in your packet, about the second paragraph down, you do mention the concept of putting out a canopy on the Main Street side to add some interest there, to your point. Councilwoman Bell.
Lloyd? I have another, maybe a question. This doesn't have to be answered tonight by any means. But I did find it interesting, and I appreciated the zoning code study that was included. And one element that was there was parking. How much parking do we have accessible to city use in the parking lot, maybe between Town Square and 135 South Main?
So in the area immediately behind the building, in the paved area? I think we need to do a little research on what we're actually allowed, or what the historical use of that has been. Certainly out on Main Street, there's, yeah, there's probably 20 stalls on the east side right there in the immediate vicinity. And then there's well over 100 in the Town Square side to the east, so.
The strip of trees on page nine, the grass and trees that's on the east side in the Town Square Park, I'm assuming that's city property, that grass strip that would be immediately east of the building?
It is. That's on the city's property.
So if we wanted to change the facility, I know there's a little bit of an elevation rise there, but if we wanted to facilitate a different entrance to the east, we could?
Yeah, certainly. There's a retaining wall that separates that lower parking lot from the elevation of the Town Square parking. And during the master planning concept of Town Square, that side of the parking lot was always envisioned as some kind of a, I can't remember the word, I'm sorry, I'm scrambled for that. But as a nice, open space, suitable for something like some outdoor dining or, you know, places for people to get together and just hang out. We just didn't have the funds to really develop it that way at the time we built the Town Square. But this may be an opportunity to enhance the use of that area right there.
I guess just my thoughts for the staff and for your colleagues is, I definitely want us to be thoughtful about the budget for this building, but I also think it's a unique catalyst, and we all see it that way. And wanting to make sure that we don't hamstring ourselves in not having the connectivity both to Main Street and the Town Square, that is, I think, an important part of why we wanted the RDA to move forward with this building and the use. So I don't want us to be shortsighted on the budget aspects and miss that larger goal of the vibrancy that we're aiming for.
Agreed.
For the downtown zone.
Yeah, I think that's well said. And in terms of, in terms of direction to initiate a process to identify potential tenants, I'd like to propose that we, you know, as time allows for Lloyd, that we ask him to put out an RFI, a request for information, and just have a list of criteria of the things that we are looking for and ask people to submit proposals saying that they're interested and asking them to share their ideas of what they would do if they were a tenant there and what they would bring. And so that's what I would like to propose as a way to, you know, select a tenant. What are your thoughts?
I like that idea. I think that's, an RFI is a good idea. I also want to short-change our colleague that's online with us today in case he had had any thoughts he wanted to share.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to go to him. Councilwoman Higginson, do you have anything that you would like to share on this topic?
I do. I agree with my colleagues that the remodel is the preferred option going forward. I'm also keen on the idea of maximizing the amenities that are available at that building while also being conscious of budget. Lastly, I think that probably it would be a more pleasing meeting to all of those attending if my picture were taken off the screen up front.
Okay, we've
Look at that.
Quest, your face has been made very small.
Thank you. It's so big naturally. It's just nice to not have it amplified.
Well, thanks for sharing your thoughts. Councilwoman Price Hewish.
I just had a question, kind of in reference to something that you said, Mike. One of the reasons you were referencing the, I think, floor joists, it would have to be installed or part of the design and construct, you know, some kind of load-bearing walls there on the east side that could handle having the rooftop dining. And it seems like what's been referenced is that adding more of those, more structural elements there that could expand that further to the west would add cost. Is there any, could you, I don't know off the top of your head, or if this could be brought to us at the next meeting or something? What would, what does that look like in terms of cost? Because as Councilmember Bradshaw mentioned, you know, do we want to do this at one and a half times the cost or the estimated cost, or do a whole rebuild? And so I think that number would be helpful, because just looking at the renderings on pages 16 and 17, looks like the maximum number of tables right now that with seating for four would be six tables. So just thinking if that could be amplified or extended, what that, what the additional cost would be to design and up the building? Is that, I mean, do you have a number off the top of your head, what that would look like? How much that would add?
I don't have a number, but I can give you an idea based off of our study. What we did for the remodel portion of this was in that back third, we actually didn't, we actually are not replacing those joists. We're actually cutting the joists and introducing just a single beam or girder that's holding all of those existing joists in place. Further west we go, we're actually taking them, replacing them. So order of magnitude, you're now introducing new joists, which would mean just that's where that cost would start adding up. Because in that back third, we're introducing one single column that goes out with an additional footing and that beam, and then using the existing joists in order to hold that. What we did was, in order to spread the load, the love between this long span, was we simply just cut it in half, so that way you could have a live load of what's required by code. But I can definitely look into it and get an exact number for you of what new joists would look like from the third forward, or sorry, third, all the way west.
I think that would be helpful, just to see maximizing that space. And then, again, I really appreciate what Lloyd mentioned about that space, kind of that potential alfresco dining space there, that patch of grass and trees. Do you anticipate, as part of any design process, that we could include that? Like, how could that be incorporated as city-owned property for dining? And maybe what access, since there is that little retaining wall there?
Yeah, there's an existing set of stairs that goes through it now. We can certainly look at that and talk about what that could be.
For tonight, since we're out of time, just want to make sure that we give direction on the three bullet points. So any other comments on any of those three bullet points for your purposes? And Lloyd, is there any, you're willing to, does an RFI sound reasonable to you to put out an RFI for potential tenants, listing our criteria, asking them to respond? And that's something that you feel like you could put together within the next six to eight weeks?
Yeah, I think the first part of August, we can have that ready to go.
Okay. So the first part of August, we could put that out, ask for tenants to reply and say what they're, if they're interested in. And then in terms of these other things, do you feel like you need direction or you're good?
As long as you're, you're comfortable with the way the ship is pointed, we'll just continue on.
Okay, any other questions from council members?
Maybe you have a comment that might be helpful in the future. This might, may or may not be included in the RFI. I would imagine, never been worked in the restaurant business, but I would imagine for every seat that you have, you might expect so much revenue. And so if we're looking at doing seat counts, which I did, because we, our parking code has a direct relation to it, so I was trying to think of how many parking spaces we need. It would be interesting, though, what that looks like as far as revenue so we can see how much it's worth investing in this space. Does that make sense? So if in the RFI, if there's a restaurant business and they're thinking we have 48 seats, whatever it might be, then they're willing to lease this space for so much money. Is it seats or is it square footage? Might be both. I don't know. But that would be helpful to me feeling good about some sort of investment in this as we move forward. And how much does it, so if we add 1,000 square feet and it turns, that turns out to be so many seats, well, how much is that going to be in revenue for them or for us in leasing this space? And then in turn, how much is it worth investing in that remodel, for example?
Oh, that's great.
I have a side question, really out of character, maybe, or out of, are you guys from Logan or Sully? Okay. When I was 19, no, I was 20, I worked on the building in Logan when it was being remodeled. Great space, it was phenomenal. They had a big, beautiful deck that over, hung over the Logan River, a portion of the Logan River. Old, old mill, beautiful building, it was really impressive, remodel.
That's great, thank you. Good, good thoughts. And now we do need to move to our regular city council meetings. So thank you so much, everyone, for your input on this. And we will take a brief one-minute break and come back for our regular council meeting.